Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready to get started? Roll call.
Okay, Mayor Frank Damm, stand camp.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Monarch.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
So, Dave, Councilman Monarch on an ambulance call, and the mayor is ill tonight.
Do we have any public forum?
Yeah, me.
Okay.
Um, I just, Scott, did you get it? You probably didn't get it, I just sent you. Did you?
That kind of thing, yes.
The Sack County Economic Development Vote for the State of Iowa came out. And I just thought it'd be nice if you guys had a copy. Because if you look down through that visitor spending by the category, it's in millions. It's for Sack County. I think most of us know that Lakeview generates most of that money. And as you see, you know, like all of the hotel motel tax is from Lakeview that we receive, and I believe we're at, what, forty-nine thousand, something like that? So, the tourism is kind of frustrating because it is the biggest industry we really have, and it's hard to see it. You don't see it as well as you see Vatto and all of those other things. So, a lot of the, you know, you guys have got some big projects going on that cost a lot of money, and I'm here to tell you that this helps pay for that. So, I'm hoping that you'll take a look at tourism money and not look at who's presenting it, but just look at the actual data that's coming. This is a national company that figures out this, it isn't the state of Iowa. So, anyway, I'm just hoping you'll take a look at tourism money and see how it affects this community. And hotel motel tax is a large part of that.
We are gonna actually have a little discussion on this tonight too, because we're talking campground tonight. We'll go through the finances of the campground, you've been just seeing what the impact of that is.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for a public forum? Closed public forum right now, so consent agenda. Looking for some?
Uh, yeah, nothing new on the consent agenda, there was one additional bill on here for Christian for some meals during training camp.
Scott, do you have a motion to approve? So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Let's do a roll call, okay? Okay, Frank.
Moving around.
Yes.
Monarch.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
City Clerk Administrator Report.
Just a couple of updates on that about health insurance. I know our health insurance agent had met today with the third-party administrator about the administration of that high deductible health plan. So, have not got a response back on that yet, but they have met and they continue to move forward on that. A little bit on, just on Outlot 20, just the very brief update on that is that we really have nothing new on that. Our city attorney is reaching out to them with Dave Ben Hill. And he was supposed to be on the call today, we'll see if he comes in yet.
So, would that be something that you'll address with him right away, or?
Yeah, I sure will. I talked with him about that today to get an update, and it just hadn't been done. He said that he would get on that quickly, but didn't know that it would be before Christmas.
And then, on that subject, I visited one of the former county supervisors, and they had an outside agency that they used for that what we want to call buy-down, pay-back, but they're self-funding.
Yeah.
And they also used an independent, that company also helped negotiate with insurance plans in the future, so it wasn't anybody directly with the county. Maybe something to see if that agency can assist us with that in the future. Does that make sense?
Basically acting as an outside broker.
Correct, yeah.
Yep. All right, anything else to discuss?
Just a couple of things on this, the dean's list, you see that that's on your table today. Dean?
What's that?
The dean's list.
Yes. We actually have, we'll have three holiday days coming up, we'll have Friday, Monday, and then the following Monday. But with the snow coming, I don't know if we're gonna have Friday so much. Plans for Public Works is paint the office at the shop and at the water plant. Trying to keep guys warm, it's gonna be really, really cold coming up at the end of the week. We're also gonna paint some pipes at the water plant that are overdue for some paint. We also have a couple of doors at the water plant that we were gonna get to, but we also had snow come in the last week.
Well, hello there, Dave. Are you able to join us for a few minutes? Okay, you just wanna, you just wanna listen on the phone? All right, all right, I'll just put you up here.
So, is that Dave, Dave Jennings?
Okay, yeah, that's Dave Jennings there, Dave is on the telephone then.
We've also been working on dump trucks. We've had a hose that broke and some hoses that need to be replaced on some of the plows. We've been taking care of that here the last week or so. We're also gonna service the dump trucks, because it's been, last spring, I believe, the last time they were serviced. We're gonna be moving some snow, everybody's aware of the weather. Jeff and the electric guy have been trimming trees today, and they're gonna continue trimming trees. There's a transfer that needs some lugs changed out on Lakewood, and then, of course, they also help with snow.
Which truck's replacing hoses on it?
The yellow one.
The yellow one.
Been working, got a broken cable on the white dump truck, so we can't dump the box. Denny ordered it.
Oh, like a record cable?
It's a cable.
Oh, okay.
Snap. Just adjusting headlights and stuff, once you start plowing snow in the morning, you know, just general maintenance stuff.
You said you think it was last spring when you serviced them last time?
I believe so.
So, you don't have the records?
I, no, this is before we started doing the record book.
So, you're starting that now?
Yes. And then we cleaned up a tree that fell down last week. Got it cleaned up.
We also, as the electric department, are going to service the bucket and digger truck. Maybe one this week, one next week, in between. Especially with cold weather, keep the guys in shape.
Hey, Dave?
Yes.
So, we had talked just a little bit about Outlot 20, just any update about where we might be at on Outlot 20?
No, we're still negotiating.
Have we sent them a letter?
No.
Is that something we formally need to do yet, or are you making headway on the phone?
I think, I think ultimately there'd be a notice of forfeiture of the contract, but I don't wanna send that out, because that triggers a thirty-day situation. And I wanna see if we can get it resolved, amicable.
And you've had communication with them then?
No, just my email.
Okay. Are they pushing back?
Yes.
So, what's our next?
I just keep the rest of it off the table.
Sure, okay.
Just the last couple of things for the administrative report. That the employees will get together for their little Christmas gathering. This is just that some, you know, the employees and supervisors bring in some food, and we get together. Be Thursday morning at nine-thirty here, and everybody's welcome to come down and spend a little time with the employees during what basically is our little Christmas party. And holidays for Christmas are Friday and Monday. And then also, the following Monday then is a holiday, so that's January 2nd. So, the next council meeting is Tuesday, January 3rd. That's it.
We got the plan specifications, forms of contract, and estimates of cost for the Northwest Water Main Loop project.
Yep, you wanna formally open the public hearing there, Mayor Frank Damm?
Open up here for a public hearing? Anything, Scott, you got anything on this one?
I don't, and if there's, I have received no comments on this. You can go ahead and close the public hearing. No, I think you have some other things to talk about. If we could, in this regards for the loop project, I want to take a look at this thing that was on your, on the table tonight called paying for spending capital projects. And before we take any action on the loop project and everything, I just want to talk through all of these things about where we would be tonight about potential spending these monies. Okay, so you see what Northwest Iowa, or excuse me, the Northwest Water Main Loop project would be. So, GM contracting is low bid, base bid at one-sixty-eight, and the alternate bid of about forty-one-eight. So, their total for constructions, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand, and then there's fourteen-thousand-six-hundred of engineering to with it. So, that's the total cost there, two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand. And you see what we have for revenues to pay for that. We had figured to pay for this with using ARPA funds, so at one-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand of ARPA funds. So, and then the next line down just says needed funds. So, that's the funds, basically, we even consider as to be short for paying for that project. Then, doing the same thing then with some other projects that we're discussing tonight. But I want to try to view these as a big picture. About the water plant media, on the expenses there, looking at the nitrates at eighty-nine thousand. And then if we would look to do the iron filters also, that's at sixty-seven thousand. And if we would do them both together, there's a five percent reduction on that. So, it's one-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-one-seventy-five would be the cost to do them all. When we had planned on this, we set aside some funds, we set aside fifty-thousand dollars for that. So, again, the needed funds there would be ninety-nine-thousand-one-seventy-five. Another project good for consideration tonight is the maintenance shop roof. And that price there, it utilizes the Nohava bid at forty-one-thousand-seven-twenty-four, and that includes a twenty-year warranty. So, and so the bottom needed funds there is also, we have not budgeted for that. So, just my suggestion there, half of it out of electric, quarter out of sewer, quarter out of general fund.
When, on that maintenance shop roof, then there's no code in there yet for, like, spray foam, insulated ceiling?
Yeah, that's true. Now, this is just the exterior door. And then also, just one other thing would be the Lake Shore Drive project. And we're not considering that tonight, but just know that this is one of those that's gonna have some additional cost on it too. See what the estimate was for base bid, and then that alternate bid for the extra concrete work. So, subtotal on construction is one-forty-one, engineering on that, twenty-two thousand. So, total project cost there, that's the engineer's last total, at one-sixty-three-five, and we had budgeted one-fifty, so we're short a little bit on that too. And just with the suggestion that the additional funds would come from the general fund. Where we are, we are fine, and we could handle those, paying for those monies there. Second page though, I just wanted to show you what the status was of the local option sales tax fund, because that's where we'll recommend that we would pay for some of these items too. Those things listed there, the technology and the incentive payments in pickleball and the Outlot 20, those, all those items are what's in the current year budget to expend local option sales tax on. Then, a couple of meetings ago, we added another expense there, and that was that water plant valve that'd be paid for sales tax. Okay? And then, if we include all of those items there, the projected ending fund balance at the end of the year is forty-four-thousand-five-hundred. So...
So, we already paid some of this out of that fund, right? So, the pickleball court come out of that?
Yeah.
And the Amity Beacon stuff come out of there already?
We already spent, correct? Ordered those, so we have not cut checks on those.
And the pickleball court, we haven't cut a check?
Yeah, we have cut checks.
We have or have not?
We have.
Okay, so that one's already spent.
Yeah, just in terms, you know, you'd think, my point here was that there's a couple of them that likely are not gonna be done at all this fiscal year. And that would be the incentive payment for housing development, and then question whether we would do anything on Outlot 20 before the end of June, you know, payments before the end of June. So, the funds would likely be there in the local option sales tax fund. So, just the bottom lines there then about how we would pay for this. If we would choose, we wanna do the entire projects on Northwest Loop and Water Plant, that'd just be my suggestion to you, it'd be a hundred thousand dollars from Washington, and sixty thousand dollars from general fund to make up those, the needed costs there. If we...
That's on all these projects?
If we would do that, and, that's on the top two on the front, and then the other two are as, are proposed there as far as the roof, electric, general, sewer, and general. Anyway, and just wanna lay that out there for you, and know that there are sufficient revenues to pay for all of these in the sales tax fund and the general fund also. So, really, when we get back to then the action on the Northwest Loop, there's two resolutions to consider here tonight. First one is, this first resolution to approve the plans and specs of the form of contract and estimate of cost. And then it would be the second resolution about actually awarding contracts.
So, we need to take a vote on that, or?
Yep, if we would have a motion on that first one about adopting plans and specs.
We have a motion on that first one? Take it.
Okay, Monarch?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, and then the next one would be the resolution then to award contract. And really, the decision here would be to include the alternate or not. And I know when last we had talked, you had talked about including the alternate. The resolution is written up with the alternate included.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second it.
Okay, Frank?
Yes.
Monarch?
Yes.
Beckman?
All right, clarification on this motion, are we making a motion to go with a little bit on that?
Yes, this would be in contract.
Yes.
And Stankin?
Yes.
This brings us to the Boulder Development Value of Non-Cash Charitable Contributions.
We had this discussion briefly at the last council meeting, and I know there was some questions then, and really looking for a couple of answers from Dave. So, can you talk through that a little bit, Dave Jennings, on this Boulder's non-cash charitable contribution?
Yes, Boulder's is seeking deduction on their tax returns for charitable contribution. They've got an appraisal, a certified appraisal, that the property that was sold to the city for fifty thousand dollars was appraised at four-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. They, as a part of claiming this deduction, the donor, which would be the city of Lakeview, has to acknowledge receipt of the gift. And that's shown in your packet at page thirteen, in Part Five, Donor Acknowledgement. What this says is that the city is a charitable organization pursuant to the Internal Revenue Code, which we are, and that if we would sell the property within three years, we would have to file a form stating that to the IRS. That would have some repercussions, potentially for Boulder's, but it would not affect the city. So, by acknowledging the receipt of this gift, but it also says in Part Five that the organization does not intend to use it for unrelated use, in other words, for non-city purposes. And so, this is simply part of the form that Boulder's needs to submit as part of their tax return in order to claim the charitable gift donation deduction.
So, for hypothetical speaking, if we, for some odd reason, within the three years, it goes back to Boulder's Development Group, the city's not liable for anything, correct?
No, we're not liable for what they took off as a deduction on their tax return. The only thing that we would have to counter, and I've done this in my file, and I think Scott's gonna put that in our file too, is if, for example, if they exercise that option within the three-year period, we would have to file this second form as referred to in Part Five, on page thirteen.
And what does that entail?
Pardon me?
What would that entail, just filing a form saying that we sold it back?
Yeah, it'd be just simply, we'd have to provide that to Boulder's and also to the IRS. And it just give an informational return that IRS, we have now sold this property, it goes back to Boulder's if they exercise their option within three years. And then it would fall back on Boulder's and the IRS to figure out what to do with the deduction at the time.
Does the city get a copy of that appraisal?
I'm sorry, why?
We have not.
But can we get a copy of it? I'm just curious about seeing the actual paperwork on that appraisal.
It seems like it's awfully inflated.
I mean, you know.
Awfully inflated is not the understatement.
I mean, if we're signing this, do we not have a right to a copy of that appraisal?
You're gonna ask them for it?
I talked to them.
This part of this form that was submitted, and this isn't included in the council packet, but you can see on where'd that go? Right above where they want the city to sign, there's a Part Four, there's a declaration of appraiser. I'm not too sure, I don't think we got the actual appraisal. I think that might be somewhat confidential, but as part of this, the appraiser, who's Richard DeHere from Knoxville, Iowa, has to certify that he has the credentials to perform the appraisal, and that it is a credible appraisal. But that doesn't come back on the city, that's the appraiser's problem.
But in the long run, say, we okay this thing for four-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars, and we start to develop property along the highway there, and these people that own the property at this present time say, well, if this is worth a hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars per acre, we're gonna chase potential developers away, because they aren't gonna be able to afford this.
Well, my worry is a little bit on that same line, but if we're looking at buying some other potential ground for development, and they see that this was appraised at four-hundred-and-forty, it just raises the cost of that for us in the future.
I agree. I talked to two appraisers, and they said it's on bordering on tax fraud. They said there's no way that thing, that piece of property should praise nowhere near that. They was looking at less than half.
Why do you care?
Because there's some potential developers down the road.
Do you sell property for what you get for it? Does it, I could have my house appraised for five-hundred thousand, and if I can't get that and I wanna sell it, it's got nothing to do with your sale price.
I agree. It has nothing to do with your sale price when you're selling a house. This is a charitable contribution at an inflated appraised value that we're signing our name with.
It doesn't affect the city?
Yes, it does affect the city.
No, it doesn't.
Is there any way we can clear that up somehow, with the, what's down the road?
Well, like, Tammy asked for a copy of the appraisal, and...
I realize this guy's gonna have to sign this to certify that he did it, but I guess I just thought that if we're signing this, we should have some kind of paperwork other than this that shows what he's talking about.
Yes, we don't have, do not have any.
You did the same thing for, what's his name, was there? I know we did. I just think it's because you're against that project, so you're looking for it. But I'm not against that. I know you're not.
The cover letter was attached to some of these documents that somebody provided to me. Because I had the same reaction of how'd they come up with that number? And then I saw that the guy was certified, and obviously wants to keep his appraisal business and that type of thing. So, he must have some comparables, probably not from Sack County, Iowa, but some comparables to justify this. I don't see any liability to the city for saying that we accepted the property, and that if we sell it, we're going to report it to the IRS. That it would become, again, back to Boulder's side of the table.
So, is there any way this will tie up if we would happen to have a deal or something? Would that interfere with any future dealings on the property? Am I making myself clear on that?
In other words, would we be bound by stating that this was worth four-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars? Is that a concern?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
I don't think so. I mean, the overall format of this is when a developer develops a property, and this doesn't really apply to the situation, but going back to the bottom deal, when they dedicate streets and improve us to the city, quite frequently in the development agreement, the developer will request this type of certification in order to take the tax deduction to make the project more feasible commercially as far as cash flow and working out the profit on their books. I looked into it pretty seriously when I got it, because of the price that was on there, and I'm comfortable with the city signing off on it. But there's another question that doesn't really have to do, I don't think, with this particular document, but if the council wants more investigation, we certainly can look into it.
And spend more legal fees on something that isn't costing you anything.
What's counsel think?
I'm not in favor of signing it.
I'm not either. And I'm worried about setting precedents for future land purchases.
Well, I think maybe we might have already done that when we did the charitable property.
Yeah, but that's a...
But that's a residential property.
Yeah, that is.
So, that's a way, and I'm thinking of different properties that we've talked about on different projects that we might have to purchase or look at purchasing. And that landlord could come back and say, well, you think this is worth four-hundred-and-forty thousand, I'm selling you way more acres than that. So, if that's worth four-hundred-and-forty at four acres, mine must be worth, let's say it's eight acres, must be worth eight-hundred thousand.
So, what would the council like to do then? That makes you feel more comfortable?
What's your opinion, Whitey?
Well, I'm going to Dave what he says about it's no repercussion back to us on this particular property. And if we go to the second, you know, you're talking about the next guy down the road. I mean, you pretty much gotta go with what the appraisal said. I don't know how we can, you know...
Like I said, I talked to two different appraisers, I did. I'm not mentioning names, because it was off the record. But they said that they wouldn't appraise it for even half of what this guy appraised it for.
Well, there hasn't been nothing in the area that has sold for that. Nothing in Sack County, for example.
Again, the documents being requested be signed is not that we agree with the amount that they're going to claim on their tax return as a deduction, which is, you know, their problem. All we're saying is that we are a charitable organization, that we did receive the property, and we're going to use it for a public purpose. And then if we sell it within three years of the receipt of the gift, that we will file the follow-up return that says that we sold it and report that to the IRS along with the copy to Boulder's, is how this works.
So, what do you wanna do, table it? Do you wanna accept it or reject it? You know, this is, we try to keep moving forward, so I'm, you know, I'm... You know, this is, we try to keep moving forward, so I'm, you know, I'm, I'm just going with the-
I think maybe I'd like to see it tabled.
Okay.
Have a little further discussion when everybody's here, Dave's here and, you know.
Table it, but do you need a motion on that or not? Or just table it?
Well, we have a motion to table it.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Moller?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, I will, I'll talk with him and see if we can get any further information on that appraisal.
Okay. All right, now we're gonna talk about the water plant, media.
Yeah, so we were awaiting the second quotation and that is the quotation then at your seat today from Crutico. So the question would be, undoubtedly Crutico's a little, little bit on this. Um, the, the question then is, is looking at what the project would entail. We, we absolutely have planned on, on replacing the media nitrate filter and then, um, then look at doing the, the iron filter then too at the, at the same time. While, while they're here, there's a little bit of cost savings for doing that, five percent cost savings. Anyway, like we had already went through the, the proposal about how we would, would propose to pay for it. It is over what we have saved up for funds, but we would be utilizing, um, a, a, a mixture of general funds and, uh, and look, look lots of sales tax forms for it and we're able to make that happen.
And this, is this when we're talking about earlier saving the reduced, reduced amount of salt? Because we're using more salt now? And does this have anything to do with, you know, with, two weeks ago or four weeks ago, we talked about people talking about the different taste of our water? Now that's, that's gone away now, is what I've heard.
We haven't, haven't got any complaints out of here recently, but-
Right, that's gone away, yeah.
The idea of replacing the, uh, iron filter media, it, it could have some, some benefits to the aesthetics.
Aesthetics, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. But this is something that we, our crew deals needs to be-
Oh, the nitrates need to be, the nitrate filters needs to be, the media needs to be changed now, yes.
And then in, I see in this, uh, we have to provide a place to dispose of it. Is there, what's, what kind of cost is that for us to provide a location to dispose of media within a mile of the water treatment plant? What, what are we really disposing of?
Uh, it's the, the actual media, um. I don't, I guess I've never had to, to put it anywhere.
And the iron filter stuff is basically sand.
Yes, iron filters-
And, and the other one is, is a synthetic, but we, we would likely still dispose of it out without.
Okay, and there's no issue with the iron?
So we need a motion to accept this or?
Yeah, if, if you wanna do both, let's have a motion to, uh, to do the nitrate and the iron.
I'm making a motion to do the nitrate and the iron.
Okay, Beckman?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Next up is maintenance shed roof.
Yeah, so there's several proposals in the, in the packet on this. Some of them are, are that, the freon stuff and the one that has been through Lakeview Lumber is on page twenty and that's the one with, with Nohava. And this is actually the roll-on dural weave. And then the, the spec on, on that, the information sheet on that's the next couple, couple pages afterwards.
And, and on that bid, you're talking about the old gutter and downspouts removal, new installed. That's not in that, that money that you were talking about, but are our current gutters and downspouts in good operating condition?
Uh, there's a couple seams that can be, you know, just, uh, sprayed with some of that, uh, there's no rust holes, I guess, so-
So you feel our current ones are fine?
Yes.
We don't need to spend another fifty-five hundred?
No.
That's my question, okay.
So anybody got any favors for sure or what?
So, yes, we were looking at this, um, and talked with Dean about this too and, and Dale about this, about the, uh, the Nohava bid. A lot of merits, I think, for, for Nohava. Again, it's this roll-on, um, not, not the spray-on. Price is, is, uh, certainly is competitive and then for twelve cents a square foot, you can add another five years to the warranty, which I would suggest that we would do.
Oh, is the warranty, yeah, twenty, twenty years?
So it would be twenty. And Nohava's a, just a very, very reputable, uh, firm, been around for quite some time, do, does big, big, big jobs.
So we talked to him, do we, give us any kind of timeline?
I never asked about the timeline. Did you?
No, I haven't even talked to him.
Okay. I, I went and talked to Chris Brilton and then he come back to me with this Nohava. And he reached out to them himself from Lakeview Lumber. And, um, they were down and looked at it apparently and crawled up there with Chris, from my understanding. So I never asked the timeline. And the other bids are all, where, was it forty-nine, two fifty for the twenty-year material, ten-year labor? I guess I didn't ask what the, is this, this warranty, is it? I don't know if the warranty is just material or if it's material and labor.
Warranty on labor and material?
It is, okay. Well, I think, I think it's one of our better options to go, we gotta get something done. Um, the people that did the, the roll-on, I should say roll, roll the edges in, they weren't favored. You'd have to tear off the whole existing roof and then start over.
But this warranty, does it, does, is it full warranty if it's the nineteenth year or is it, uh, depreciated out?
It does not say that and I think that's something we could find out before we make move on this because, um, just find out a couple of them, few questions, the timeframe and the, is it a prorated warranty?
Right.
That's what, yep. Because if we make the decision tonight or two weeks from now, it doesn't matter.
No.
Right?
I don't think it's, I think it's something we should find out, these questions first and then proceed.
I'm in favor of that.
So we'll table it tonight?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table it till we found out the true depth of the warranty and the timeframe.
Second?
Second. Um, has anything been done with this roof?
No.
With the-
Nothing new on the blisters and whatnot?
Blisters and the weed growing through it?
Nope, we've not.
Would they be able to look at that also? To patch it?
Oh, they, I don't know, we'll, we'll certainly talk to them about it.
So you got three questions already.
So we're gonna table this then?
We'll take the vote now, Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, well, the remainder of the meeting is gonna be on this departmental needs assessment. Anybody gonna have any other questions for Dave Janet or maybe we can just let Dave go?
He doesn't know, so we keep moving forward.
All right, Dale, I think we're gonna let you go then.
All right, will you get a copy of the proposed words? Why don't you send that up to me so I can look at it?
Okay, yes, can do.
All right, thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Department inventory and needs assessment. Sort of feel like Santa Claus here.
Well, what would you like to do? Just walk through the-
Yeah, I just say, walk through the-
Through the packet?
Yep.
Dean would be number one then. Did you wanna talk through a, a little bit about this, about the vehicle and inventory, vehicle and equipment inventory? Just get any highlights, about any changes on that as well as any other changes on the, uh, on the facilities? And then we'll talk about the, uh, the proposed needs assessment, Doc.
Uh, on our vehicles, on Public Works trucks and such, um, they're all pretty much, uh, same as last year, good average condition. Uh, our chop saw, I, the only thing I did was move back to average condition because we do use that quite a bit. Other than that, you know, pickups all run good. Um, we got the twenty seventeen Ram moved from the police department to Public Works.
That said similar in your-
Yes, correct, correct. Um, street sweeper's still in fork condition.
What do we have put aside for the street sweeper?
Eighty thousand, is that what, am I reading that right?
Eighty thousand, at the end of the, and, at the end of June, we'll have eighty.
So that's something that's gonna be needing?
We've been, uh, replacing some hoses here this year on it. Um, it doesn't pick up like it used to, uh, you know, I've noticed, the biggest thing I've noticed is the gutter rooms stay flat. They don't go tilting down into the gutters like, you know, the street sweepers that I'm used to. They'll tilt and then, or they'll tip out, tilt back up, you know, they'll grab stuff out of, uh, out of your intakes, you know? Whereas this one just goes right over the top of who does not clean them very well at all. Um, but it's starting to, uh, hoses are going bad, uh, leaking and then we can't get out sweep streets like we needed to because it's, it's starting to break down.
So we purchased that back July at when?
I saw the bad, the bad date on that because, boy, that is right around two thousand, yeah, it's, it's been that long.
And you have, you mentioned you had a couple of meetings that you'd like to move to a different-
To a back sweeper.
Back sweeper.
Yes, and sucks them up, you know.
And that's like into a truck thing that they drive out and dump, right?
Yeah, correct. It, it's all self-contained. It actually will pack the leaves into that holding tank. Um, whereas right now it just kind of fluffs them down into the tank and then you gotta have another, when it's getting really bad, you gotta have another truck, a dump truck sitting there and another person dumping in where you'll pack more into the back sweeper. And then one person drives it out there, they can go road speed, speed limit, but go out there, dump it, they'll scrape it out a little bit, shut the door, come back in and go right back at it.
And I think you had somewhere the estimated cost of a new one or something like that.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was three hundred on new and then, uh, it was about a hundred and fifty on used.
Have we reached out to anybody, um, that's in that business?
I did, that's where I got that price from. Um, environmental, uh, they're out of Minnesota, uh, Big Al's his name. Um, and that's who Manson bought their last two. I recommend a stainless steel tank, uh, because it does generate heat and water and if it's regular steel, it will rust and then the stainless steel, uh, that one up there, it's still going and I think purchased that about ten years ago and it's still going really strong.
You purchased that about ten years ago, was it new or used?
Used.
Okay.
Used.
So if talking to any of these businesses that sells these, would there be such an option that you could have a lease purchase agreement with them?
Um, that would probably-
That's how we purchased this last one that we had, the, the last one that we, or the one that we currently have, we purchased new, but it was a lease purchase we paid over three years. And it's, uh, of course, there's just some interest to go along with it, just basically ended up being a loan.
I know, uh, Rita just bought a new one, a back sweeper and, uh, Barry, he wasn't for it really, but now he loves it. Uh, and theirs is a Timco four hundred, I believe, or something like that. I'd recommend the six hundred. You could get a hose on the back that, so it's-
What's the difference between the four and six hundred, more capacity?
More capacity. And, you know, Timco six hundred, which I'm used to, you have a hose on the back, you can go to intakes, clean out the intakes in five minutes.
Will you guys get out and do that?
Oh, yeah.
I'm just asking, it'll work out.
I, I know.
And it's T E M P C O?
T Y M C O, Timco.
T Y-
May, Waco, Texas.
Oh. I per, I think I'm familiar with what you're looking at. And I know, trying to think, the, uh, Suzu trucks, the, still those Suzu trucks?
Yes, the, the cab was whatever you wanna call them. Those are generally what they use, Ford freight liners, Azuzus. I know the-
It'd be nice to, in my opinion, only, about, do we have any budget in this kind of year for that?
We could save the money for it.
Just save the money for it. If we follow the right deal, we could maybe mix up the work.
Yeah, yeah.
I know the, we deal with sweeper parts out of Des Moines for our sweeper now. He also does Timco. But he goes, you're the same guy up in Minnesota.
So you're like passing the middleman?
Correct.
It's definitely something that we need to start putting in the priority list. I've noticed like, well, after that personal storm, there were some areas where the snowpods are pushing up the leaves that aren't getting picked up by the street sweeper.
Mm-hmm. And also some of those leaves were blown out of our yard into the street as well.
We have an ordinance against that.
Um, anything else on the street sweeper? Everything else on this, uh, inventory, um, you know, could we just-
Let me ask you about the chop saw quick, like, as you said you moved that up.
I moved that to average.
Oh, and so explain to me what the chop saw, which-
It's our, uh, fourteen inch cement saw that everybody bent over and start cutting stuff with. It's, it's, uh, our handheld.
A cement saw?
Cement saw, you could cut-
I think of a chop saw, like a metal chop saw.
Yeah, it's not one of them.
No, it's kinda like what we had at the fire department, Dale, when we were cutting it up, so.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, we don't have a chop saw like you, we have a bandsaw down there.
Yeah, okay.
For equipment on the inventory and stuff, like I said, it's just, uh, everything's pretty much same as last year.
And what type of rotation have we had in the past with our Public Works vehicles?
Um, is that ten years?
We wanted to be ten years on pickup truck. And we've not, uh-
We missed that.
We haven't even, yeah, adhered to that in some of these pieces. But, yeah, we, you know, so we asked our department heads about their priorities on that too and it never, it has not come up as priority to, to be working on pickups. Are there things they'd like to be, to be working on?
Sure, that's all. I just was asking.
We do have one coming up in part of this deal, or one pickup truck.
It was kind of a, it, it's a shared truck.
Mm-hmm.
What it was is when the electric department had their service truck, we moved it in front of the, uh- What it was is when the electric department had their service truck, we moved it in front of the hydro vac is what they call it, but our vac, our orange ditch switch, we moved it from the electric department out of our service to that truck to be in front of that. We spent a lot of money on that truck, trying to keep it operational. That's part of the reason we kicked it out of electric department and bought a different service truck. They were able in the Public Works to get a different pickup. Everybody seems to be content with the pickups we have, we've talked, being both departments use it, we're kind of wanting to replace that truck.
Is that the one Trent drives most of the time?
No, no, that F I fifty, that's the one the electric got, but this is the F three fifty?
The F three fifty, Brian Swanson and I, that's the first year we went to a diesel for a service truck in two thousand and six. I know Dale, you're aware of the old six liter Fords that everybody loves so well, this is one of those.
That's not in that list, that list that we just split over?
No, that would be in, I believe, in the electric side. But I just wanted to say it's coming up because we do want to replace a pickup.
We don't want to replace it with another extended cab. We'd like to go to maybe a F four fifty duly to handle that trailer better and do a flatbed, because we feel we can use that flatbed for a lot of other things, you can unhook off of that, use it for a lot of other stuff.
All on the transformer.
Whatever may it be.
Yeah, but it would also pull the jet truck and we'll get that out and start.
Sewer jetters, if they need it, they can unhook it from there, go get sewer jetters, because these half tons don't handle those trailers very well.
And they squat when you hook those two trailers up.
So Trent's, one Trent drives with the utility box on, that's a three quarter truck?
No, that's an F five fifty.
Oh, that's a five fifty, so that's a one man.
Yeah, and the reason we have that is mostly if you're pulling the Mini X or if we load the trencher, skid loader, it does a lot of that. And that's a two thousand and seventeen, so that's one of the newer ones that we have.
That, that a gas?
That's a diesel.
Diesel.
Uh, six seven.
Oh, inventory and assessment of major public facilities, the water treatment plant. You know, we had the clear well done, just backed out, wasn't like cleaned out, we noticed that there was a bunch of lime and stuff in it.
Just, just comment on that real quick about that clear well that, as we worked through our needs assessment here, you won't see it listed on that, but we are still getting price on, on cleaning out the crust, you know, all of the.
Which page are we on?
The line, that's, we're gonna end up on page twenty six here pretty quick, but.
Is that clear well on twenty six?
No, it's not even listed in here.
Well, I, I see it on page twenty four, or I just, on the comments, but Scott did. He was gonna talk to Midco Diving, or they called?
Yeah, we, the same firm that had cleaned it last time and commented about all of the, the heavy lime deposits in there and whatnot that basically need to be chipped away, but we never did get a proposal on that, they're giving us a proposal now.
So you're on page twenty four, yeah?
Yeah, I was just flipping through.
I see you got fire hydrants listed in that, did you ever get them all tested, have you got your meter fixed?
I haven't got that back yet. And I, I told them, go ahead and fix it, and they said okay and hasn't, I don't know why it takes so long to pull it apart, but I have not.
When did you last have a conversation with them on it?
Probably been six weeks ago, hasn't it?
I mean, yeah.
Since we've been.
But yeah, we got those other two fire hydrants, well, one fixed, one that we have to look into more about getting piping to it, because it was not.
The one under South State Road?
Yeah, the one that doesn't work by.
Plain block on?
Yes.
So have we reached out to the state to get permission so we can cut them?
I have not.
That needs to be a high priority.
Yes.
Fire hydrants, we've talked about eleven months now, it was talked about for two years before that, for sure, two years before that. And it needs, fire hydrants need to be a high priority, see you got down here conditioned good. Some of them are below average, a poor. We know that on the test that we're on, so I'm stressing that heavily. For, for lots of reasons, and you know that.
Yes.
But I don't know, Scott, do you have to reach out to the state? Because we have to cut into that.
We have to cut into the, to the road, into the.
And it's, they've been real good about that, we just interact with the local, with the local folks here and then if any permits would be needed, they'd get that done, but historically they haven't been.
So if that was that simple, that you just made it sound, how come we didn't do it then this fall?
You didn't have any of the pieces to.
None of the pieces to make the nineties, forty fives, whatever, because.
Do we have them now?
No, because we don't know what we're gonna need, because.
So again, so if we don't have the pieces, we didn't do it because we didn't have the pieces, why did we not do it to see what pieces we need? But we've done nothing.
Because I.
So, so, see my point, we didn't cut into it because we don't have the pieces, what you both just said, so do we order the pieces, no, we don't, didn't order the pieces because we don't know what we need, so how do we know?
I did not know that we needed, didn't.
Am I making sense with my question?
Didn't need to get a hold of the DOT to get a permit to cut into the street.
I don't think either one of you two, Scott or Dean, understand the importance of an operating fire hydrant. If your house is on fire and we go to hook onto a fire hydrant and it don't work, and now your neighbor's house catches on fire, you see the importance I'm talking about here? I think that is something that needs to be stressed and stressed again. Eleven months we've been stressing it, plus the two years before that, did everybody hear that? What do we have next?
Maintenance shop, we have, we talked about that. Radio read meters, replaced by a thing, batteries are still good.
While you're talking about that maintenance shop, is there any way between now and we look at doing the roof that we can get a quarter, tearing down that insulation and re-insulating it the right way?
Yes.
These radio read meters, we installed them around two thousand and fourteen.
Thirteen, I believe.
And their, what was the life expectancy of them?
Twenty year battery.
And they're going, they're faulting?
We did some checking, it wasn't not the batteries that were stopping, it was actually the lime buildup in the meter base itself is what's stopping the meters.
And that's like Dean Nelson's?
No, that was rust.
Rust, okay.
Yes. Like, there's a couple of businesses downtown that completely stopped, it's because the, the, deal that spins inside the meter was all lined up and just stopped. It's like the same thing that's happening down at the water plant. The high service pumps will get full of lime and then just lock up, same thing doing to the water meter.
So some of these other places that are complaining about low water pressure, could that be contributed to that?
It could.
Is there something we need to be treating our water with more because of this lime, I mean, it's been an issue. In my old house, I went to hot water heaters every two to three years because of the lime buildup. And then I put a static, something to reduce the static in the lines and it helped tremendously. We was using copper and we changed it to, to PEX. Went from copper to PEX to the hot water heater and it improved it dramatically.
Okay.
Is that something that, I know Lakeview's, historically, Lakeview are both known for very hard water. Is that something that our local water treatment folks might know, if there's something we can do at our water treatment plant to help with that?
No, other than looking at municipal softener, I mean, that's.
Well, I'm not saying municipal, we're talking about the lime buildup or the static, is that worth asking?
You know, I had soft water, so it isn't, it's.
Does not do things.
It's not.
You know what I'm saying? Is that worth of that, is that worth that we could visit with somebody like a chemical engineer that would know, hey, you could add this maybe to your water treatment plants and cost you whatever it might cost us to help our water situation in town, help with all these meters lime buildup? Would Jerry know that?
I haven't really talked with Jerry, I didn't, I don't know that there's anything.
I gotta call him anyway and talk to him about it.
Because, and then I think, do we have a list of, and I know we're getting off subject here, because we're going through the needs assessments, but it brings up, do we have a list of the people that were complaining about the water pressure? You know, it's.
If they contact us, they do. Okay, if, if they contact us, we got some, like Dave, I recall, over with some complaints that he had got, so we get them secondhand and I wouldn't know those ones. But it wasn't pressure, those were aesthetic.
Right, so I'm talking about the pressure ones, because we went to like Dave Nelson's for example.
Found out what that was, then Nate Moore, we went and changed out the meter and air and checked it and it ended up being his water softener. So it was actually.
The reason I'm asking this question is we had a proposal for like five hundred and eighty thousand for a northwest pressure system and, you know, if it's water meters that's causing this for lime buildup or something, we're wasting our money spending five hundred and eighty thousand on something that's not the problem.
I can talk to Jerry about if there's something that can be done, like stat, I don't know what that is.
Dick Petshower's the one that suggested.
So you had a water heater, you know that tube?
Yeah.
You could change that to a different.
It didn't care if I know me, but it did.
And it takes that lime stuff out of it so it's not eating away at your tank so fast, it's eating away at this faster. And it, it helps with the water, all the water.
So maybe we can do something in the.
Water treatment.
Wet well, something with that.
I don't know if that's possible, but Jerry Cruz would know.
I will talk to him about that.
The other thing is, and this is looking really big picture, when we talk about having to do something about chlorides and we had that discussion about chlorides here a couple, a couple of months ago, and we're just doing tests on that now, but the chloride, you just think of that in terms of salt. And, and all of the salt that comes out of each one of those individual residential softeners, okay? You know, we are finding out that the chlorides out of our water treatment are pretty low. So the chlorides that are coming into the system are coming from all of these residential softeners, so.
Into our sewer system?
Correct.
Yeah.
So then we, we're not getting dinged yet, but eventually we could get dinged for all the chlorides going out into the creek. And talking with Tom Rus, just down the line, if it came to something, D and R will tell you, tell you guys to tell the citizens we're gonna outlaw water softeners. I said I will not be at that meeting.
Which is, of course, that's a pretty tough deal, but then there needs to be other system wide issues then that we'd be looking with on the water treatment side of things, like municipal softener.
That's why I was wondering if Jerry would have an idea for something.
You gonna put up to twenty six, Dean, and start walking down what you're proposing on needs assessment?
Replacing the street sweeper, that would have been my priority on Public Works, we talked about that. Our vac, that is a highly used machine. Both sides use it constantly. Right now, you know, it's beginning to rust, you know, it's worth something now. We would like to see maybe getting rid of it sooner than letting it kind of wear out even farther, when it's not worth as much. We would like to go to a warm water machine for winter time use.
You're talking about the rust, is it functionally?
It's functionally still working.
It's functionally good, but the appearance is rust?
Appearance is starting to.
No, it's the tank.
The tank?
The inner part of the tank is where we got most of our rust problem.
But it's not like eaten through?
Not yet.
Number three is that F three fifty that we were talking about? Like you said, like to replace it with just the cab and chassis, put a flatbed on it.
So I want to make sure I understand what's a pickup that is.
Have you seen the, the, our ditch switch back go out?
Yeah, but usually it's behind, is, is that pickup look just like?
It looks like the five fifty.
It looks like five fifty, but it's a single wheel.
It, it looks just like the, um, one Trent drives.
It does, it's got a fiber body on it, but it's a single back wheel.
Okay, so my question, I'm just asking, so I understand, chase it with a flat, replace it with a flatbed, so that fiberglass body, are we not gonna utilize, how are we gonna haul tools?
We really don't have that many tools on that truck, that fiber body was put on for the electric department for all the tools they had in the very beginning.
Okay, that's my question.
And then we just moved that truck over is what we did with it.
And I understand like the flatbed to haul a transformer, haul that type of stuff.
We talked, we talked maybe put a smaller under the.
Yeah, like a toolbox that I need to.
Just if you need.
Like scraps or something like that. Priority number four, skid loader, I believe Dale, it would view like when the hours start going up, that's when it starts depreciating.
How many hours are on our skid?
Twenty twos, almost probably twenty, they just switched to twenty, no, it's, it's twenty two hundred, twenty two hundred something.
Yeah, twenty two eleven, click on, you know, that was, we just had a snowstorm, so it's up just a little.
So is that, is that list on here somewhere?
Yeah, how many hours are on it?
Page twenty three?
Yeah, twenty three, it's on there.
I think it's two thousand and sixteen model.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. I had to put fuel in it after that last snowstorm and it, it was like twenty two, twenty two point twenty two. When I, when I went and wrote the hours on it for putting fuel in.
But it's, you know, it keeps throwing this code for the back van, did you ever?
I called him, I called him again, I talked to Ryan at Haley's. It comes on, then it goes away, and the last time we had it down there for that code, they said it was a fuse blown. He said if it comes up again, take pictures of the code that come up and we'll work out whether they're gonna send somebody up or we gotta haul it back down there again. We run it the next day or two for eight, ten hours, that's when it seems to throw the code, so we'll know this week.
And these are just, it's not a major engine thing, but then now you're starting to get up into the hours to where, like you said, it's not gonna be worth as much, the more hours you got on it, so trade in value can bring it down so we can get another one.
Are you looking at that, at that, potentially this upcoming budget year, are you holding off for another year, let's see, let's see, I'm timing.
How many hours?
I think you need.
We got twenty two hundred hours on it now, they put on an average of two hundred and thirty four hours a year is what that sheet says.
I think, yeah, I don't, I don't know where most people trade for hours, I guess that's the question is, where's a, a good trading point?
So you're getting the most out of that piece of equipment when you traded him?
I can't use my father for, father-in-law for example, because he just goes and trades when he feels like it, so I can't know by the hours he runs. And it's a lot less than twenty two hundred. And it's a lot less than twenty two hundred.
If you look at, at page twenty seven, I'll start off with the first couple things on that. That uh, priority number one, there is just knowing that we do have these payments on that patching project that'll run now for the next five years, figure twenty two thousand dollars a year on that. And then uh, we would budget for the engineering on that, on that bridge replacement out there by the old sewer plant. And the estimate on that uh, engineering is seventy five thousand dollars then for, for this upcoming budget year planning then to replace the bridge then the following year after that. Then you wanna talk about the streets then, Dean?
Uh, me and Tracy, uh, Tracy came up and we drove around and looked at some of these uh, streets and gave me prices on uh. What it costs to do uh, these projects, you know, like the asphalt streets or a hundred eighty one uh, ton. And that was Main, Harrison and Vine, so it's like from First Street down to Harrison, up all the way over to High Street and then Main Street to First. Were the ones where like overlay project, um. Uh, seal coat fogging would be like uh, down Blossom, uh, from Third down to basically the uh, engines to the park. Crack sealing, we picked out some streets that would work great for crack sealing. At one eighty five a foot.
So he's got down here Lakewood Road and Lakewood Drive, is that past Dean team at Dallas place?
Lakewood Road is in front of Jukies, isn't it?
That's Lakewood Cut Off.
That's cut off.
That's Lakewood Cut Off.
I'm not sure what a Lakewood Road is, if it's two parts of, what about Lakewood Drive here?
Well, then there's Lakewood Drive on there.
Yep.
So didn't, in the last couple of years, didn't we just put the seal coat on Lakewood Drive and Porch Street Drive?
On Lakewood, well.
Past Dean team Dallas place?
That was, that was not the last one that was done, that was the project previous, so that's probably about four years, and that's, that area that I think is still a little.
Yeah, that'd be more of a.
So why's he hit that on here by question?
Uh, seal coat, uh, not seal coat, uh, crack seal, yes.
Lakewood Drive runs in two sections. Don't have a Lakewood Road.
It's just listed on here, Lakewood Road.
Yeah, he probably just put it down Lakewood Road. Did not run here.
Guess the other thing to, to tell you on the streets is that it would not anticipate that we would have any significant amount of money to do a street project this year. We uh, have done street projects every couple of years and in order to save up enough money to make a substantial sized street project. So if, as we talk about this more during budget time, I think the notion about doing some asphalt streets is pretty tough, but if you wanna take a look at. At some seal coating or some crack sealing, that might be a good alternative this year. Page thirty then Dean about water?
Yep, uh, water plant maintenance, that's, you know, our valves and 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 uh, any piping that needs to be replaced. You know, it's twenty years old. Uh, fire hydrants again, we talked about that and uh, importance of it. We will get on that. You know, we have subdivisions gonna.
Still take place?
I, I did. I did list these, you'll see these in the electric part too. To uh, know that they're still pending, I guess, and and just keep these in in the back of your mind. The numbers are the same numbers we used last year, and those are certainly not subject to change about whatever we might do for, for any, any new layout of the subdivision or anything. But just recalling again that, that they're there and uh, we need to be considering those when we go through budget time. Uh, priority four there is uh, water valve replacement, doing five per year, this year we're trying to get them on the fire hydrants that we needed to replace. Water meters, uh, we talked about that, about how they're uh, starting to quit because of the buildup, so we will, you know. Be buying some to replace just the bottoms.
And this is just listed here really as a, as a discussion point and to know that we gotta start um, budgeting a significant amount to purchase meters. To know that we can replace them, them then as needed, so we're, we're looking at, at twenty five hundred bucks in a, in a meter cost, how much for a meter base?
Uh, it's about between eighty or a hundred bucks, I think, Dean, sorry.
So that's uh, you know, if that does two hundred fifty meters, there's, there's ninety hundred on ourselves. Just those other projects that are, that are pending yet, of course, the uh, the uh, highway water main, the, in the, in the school water main loop. Uh, water plant about to be uh, replaced immediately, that I'm gonna tend to uh, this winter and spring. We'll have that discussion then as we continue to work on, on water pressure issues, that Northwest Pressure System is, is still uh, out there as an alternative. And leak detection, Dean had talked about that, um, when we were going through this renewal, we have that budgeted for this year, we just need to uh, get the guy here. To, to actually do that again now.
Is that the guy that?
He's been here to locate one, this would just be routine, we want somebody to come here to locate routine leaks.
He was the one that drove around on that moped thing, whatever, with the dragging and stuff?
Uh, San Mary Sewer, uh, lift station upgrades and maintenance, uh, to number seven and thirteen. The controls are outdated, um, pumps were back in ninety eight, was it Scott that I looked at that? It's just keep them up and running so that we don't have any issues with people backing up. Uh, rehab manholes, um, you know, there are a few that are falling apart, the brick ones. And we've talked about that before, about how they do that and swing that slurry up there. And then again, there's the uh, demo of the old sewer plant.
What's this Omni Beacon alarm notification, haven't we got them yet?
Uh, we ordered them, just waiting for uh, Jason to bring down, we got the one on the new uh.
Crest Park Drive.
Crest Park Drive, I ordered all the, the other ones, Jason's gonna come down, he's going to put into and show us how to put them in, and then we, he says they're really simple. And when they were, they're doing that uh, control box, he said he's not afraid to have, you know, the electric part can hook up the four wires. But he will show us how to do it, and then we'll take it from there and just start.
So you have them?
We have, we don't have them, he, he hasn't called me and said he's got them yet either, but they are ordered.
And we, did we do half of them already, or is that what we ordered for half of them?
No, we were doing, we did the ones for around the lake, didn't we?
Yep, ate them.
Who's Jason?
Jason Roseauer with Quality Pump.
Um, speaking of the sewer plant, I wonder how many months ago we were talking about the issues that still need to be done out there, where are we at with that?
On the.
The new, the new goo?
Oh, the new goo.
The vent pipes and.
Yes, that, so.
Leaks and stuff.
Yeah, so the, we've had uh, real good success as far as having any problems with the leaks, their, their wet spots aren't, aren't out there. We were still looking at the idea of putting in a uh, a tile though, and King had given, King had given a lumpsome price to do that. And, and then the engineers needed an itemized price in order to even get that to the, to the bond company. And they've been sitting there waiting for a long time for that, but um, I don't know they were working yet with the company on, on the roofing out there too. So King would be the, the firm to do this for us, they were just waiting for approval on pricing.
And then, then there's some like leaking doors or something too?
Yeah, they need sweeps. Sweeps underneath the doors are brushes, and it's just where bugs and stuff, there's no water, well, unless you get a really hard rain, it'll come through.
Nothing has been done on any of that stuff from that one meeting that you talked about that list. And who do we, who do we need to push on that?
I've talked to Marcus twice.
I said we'll keep talking.
One day we sent your opening bids, I asked him about it and said he was working on it, and then I called him about something else and I asked him about it and.
There was a whole list of stuff on there, King?
There was three different items, we were worried about the mold, we were worried about the door, then we were worried about the water coming through the.
The vent?
Uh?
The vent?
Yeah, and we also had, we're kinda worried about that block was absorbing or there was a leak in there somewhere.
Then they were, they were looking, that has a roof issue then.
Oh, is that one, yeah.
So that's what they were looking at is really having to replace the roof on that proposal.
And we're still on there dying yet, right?
Yes, oh yeah.
Cause then we have like a million dollar. Grant thing or whatever comes back once we sign off?
We do, it's a million dollar loan forgiveness, and just that, so if that million dollars is still on our loan and, and just. Yeah, understanding, you know, we're paying interest on that million dollars.
Is that one and a half or three?
One and a half.
One and a half.
Might be, I think it was one point one.
Yep. Hey, uh, Storm Sewers, again, Camp Crescent, Crescent Park there, uh, draining it, uh. We all know about the one seventy five drainage, culverts and such, uh, intake replacement, we do have. I know over here on Madison, we've got some intakes that need to be replaced there, um. And then uh, the one at Third and Lake needs to be replaced and fixed, it's just sits there too low and kind of, you turn the corner and it drops down. Need to repair the storm sewer over there, lakeside of Speaker Park across Third. I've looked up in there, there's a piece of uh, of the tile itself that has rusted and fell, um, I don't know how far back it goes across the road. Once we get that tore up, uh, this spring we'll know, I wanna get it before. People start walking and we start having events happen there.
Where that storm sewer comes into the lake, isn't that eroding pretty bad around there?
It's because of that, the top part of that steel covert has rusted and collapsed, so then everything hits that and then goes through the rust holes and spreads out. And then that starts eroding the rock, and I talked to um, uh, DNR Ryan to make sure that it's okay that we can. Cause they have their own little rules and stuff, he said as long as you put the rock back, you know, and don't.
Okay.
Make them rip it, he's okay with it, just get it done.
Okay.
If we get into below the water, high water line.
Well, remember uh, my place, we weren't even close to the water line, we had never committed.
For the rip ramp?
No, when we were in front of Crescent Park Drive, along there, remember, I had to stop doing my work, cause then I put it with DNR, I wasn't even close to the water.
Okay, yeah.
Remember, and I had.
You, we had to get it permitted.
Yeah, so we had, we might need to wanna get the permit with this ahead of time as well.
Yeah, see, see what we can do. Um, looking at priority number one, number two, just a little update on that as far as working with DGR on those, on those uh, plans. Number, number one, they, we had wanted them to come back and, and shoot Third Street as it goes down the hill on the backside of Sparky's. Okay, now they have been here, they've shot that, but I haven't heard, haven't got any uh, response back them about, uh, from them about any other alternatives then on the drainage. Cause that uh, was gonna be one way that we would try to look to uh, to reduce cost a little bit there. To keep that drainage on the, on the south side of Third Street, and then it would naturally flow down the hill. Um, when it comes budget time here, it's just that, that priority number two, we're gonna have to sit down and, and. Figure out what, what some next action steps are gonna be to actually implement some of that stuff. You know, and, and whether it's, whether we would ever look at doing one of these very expensive projects, or if you ever look at implementing a project that does not fulfill. The, you know, really the engineering drainage that's there.
Is there on that for Hauser, is there any incentive for him to put a waterway from the highway to Indian Creek? A lot of farmers have waterways and, I mean, he's trying to farm the whole thing.
Sure. I'm not, I'm not sure on the farm programs, we can have a talk then then too, cause uh.
Yeah, we talked about a, a ditch being dug through there to handle the water or tiling it all the way out, but you know, a lot of farmer uses the waterways true.
All right.
That's always been wet down there.
Pardon?
That's always been wet down there.
Good, any, anything else then for Dean? All right, we'll talk amongst ourselves here for a second.
Got any coffee left over there?
Yep.
Here you go. Should I warm that up?
Yeah.
Do that, so that's great, thanks.
Nathan?
It's on YouTube, I walked in.
So soon?
You wanna run that? It's got what holds in me. He's a department head, he was for the system.
Have a safe trip.
Merry Christmas.
Yep, same to you.
Just wondered, what question I had for the helicopter.
You and Carl's wanna share one? Yep. Well, for the inventory part, we're looking at.
Thirty two.
The yellow digger truck, which is the old digger truck, that's, that's Bill's always had it up for, the only reason that truck's still here is when we got our new one in two thousand ten. They weren't willing to give us much for, so we decided we're keeping it for our own usage. We use it a lot on pulling lift station motors and that stuff, so it's, it's only used here and there. But I don't, I don't see any reason to get rid of it. The next thing is the F three fifty, which we've already discussed all of that on, the F three fifty that's in front of them, that. Well, that's pretty much the only ones that I have that's poor as far as electric department equipment. Being in very poor shape, but everything else is in very good shape for the most part.
What's, what's this trencher trailer that says crack frame?
That is the old trencher trailer.
That is the old trencher trailer that uh, we use for water carnival and haul floats on. That tongue has been cracked for a long while. I guess, I guess what we talked about was if we're gonna keep it around, it's, that's the deck over one, so it's handy for the floats.
Correct.
So we talked about having.
King or somebody welded a certified welder?
Somebody certified to weld it, not us.
Yeah, because.
I don't, just take that liability.
Correct.
Take that liability, I don't think the city wants that liability if something would happen to it. But that trailer doesn't get used a, a ton, but we do use it here and there.
That should be, that's a maintenance title that should just get done, isn't it?
Yes, pretty good.
King or Phillips or.
Yeah, it's not a certified welder.
Um, priority one, the biggest, the bucket truck is on a twenty-year rotation, same as the Digger Derrick. Mostly part of that is liability. Um, they're tested annually for acoustics, sound, the acoustic does the sound on fiberglass part of the booms. And the other thing is for uh, electric tracking, they have to have a certification on that every year. So, once they get to that twenty-year era, a lot of these testing companies really don't like to test them when you get to that. And that kind of goes back to this old yellow digger, we get it tested to know for our own what it's testing at. But as far as using it in high line type situations, they really aren't standing behind that truck. So, our Digger Derrick is a two thousand ten, so we're looking twenty years out from that, twenty, twenty thirty for that. The bucket truck is a oh-six and so we're looking at twenty twenty-six. Talking with, um, I reached out to the three dealers that we currently own. Trucks from a different, the bucket trucks from ABM, the digger trucks from Altech, the old digger trucks from DUCO. I reached out to them and what they're telling me is if you're looking at replacing it in twenty-six. You better start ordering it now and, and start designing it now, cause you're anywhere from three to five years before you'll see that truck. So it's not like it's an urgent thing, but I put it priority one just for the fact that we should get the ball rolling. And you don't pay for it until you get it anyhow, so if it's five years out, you're not paying for it till then. So that's the biggest thing with the bucket truck.
Would that be out that far, do they guarantee the price then or what?
I think one, once you order it, then that's the price you ordered it at, then you're locked in at that. And they just keep going up, I'm telling you.
You got a price of three hundred and fifty and that's twice what the oh-six cost.
Yep, and, and I think we're on the low side of three fifty right now, it's probably between three fifty and four hundred.
So when you order it, it's locked in is what you're saying?
Right.
Two years down the road, they want, not gonna come back and say, oh, by the way, there's gonna be a surcharge added on.
Cause when you order this, you order your chassis, I mean, that, that whole ball starts.
Okay.
And typically you'll see on our, on that inventory list, we bought the last two freight liners from Holcombe, which Holcombe is no longer in Sussie, it's Ice State. Um, we kind of stayed with that freight liner just so we had to buy the same filters or, you know, stay with the same chassis. We're not married to that chassis, um, they push, I think when we did that, we bid freight liner and uh, international. So, we're not married to that chassis, but that's, Bill stayed with it because we bought him that four years apart or whatever. Then the next thing is, is since this has come to light with uh. Outlot twenty. Um, and Lakewood Partners at Hankies, that all was kind of a, a big thing at the end of the year last year. Now it, it sounds like that uh, Lakewood Partners is probably gonna go through with some stuff, so that's probably our next priority on that subdivision. Um, I was talking with Scott, a lot of material we have on hand, I mean, there's some odds and ends stuff, but we're probably sitting in pretty good shape as far as. Putting that in, that equipment in. And this has been on the list for years and years on the, on the West Rule, West City, Hallets Circuits to finish the project that's. Bill's been working on for years and years, so I just, I'm, it's important and I just, I'm, I don't feel to take it out.
Cause when, when you look at this then, when you look at priority three, four and five, those priorities are the first phase. Of what the engineer suggested in our system stuff, those are the highest uh, priority things about, about what he would, would suggest.
Remember that was based on a two percent growth every year.
So, yeah, we would, would be, so this underground from the sub, from the substation basically down to uh. The intersection Harrison there on.
Harrison High.
Harrison High, yep, we placed all that underground and then you get into substation upgrades. And one of the main reasons about a substation upgrade would be um, item number five there about adding an EVACCO circuit.
That's anticipating that they build more buildings out there and then, you know, we have to. We have to keep up with them building as far as keeping our system. If we took a designated line to them, that would take a ton of load that they're on right now on the East Rule. Which East Rule, not only has East Rule on it, but it has a good chunk around the lake. That will free up some load on that East Rule by giving them a designated circuit. And, and Scott and I have talked several times, if, if this is something that we think about doing or, or try to work through, it's something we need to go to EVACCO and. See if they're willing to, you know, help out with some of this, giving them a designated circuit to that. Industrial area, however you want to call it out there.
So when you say running a, a dedicated circuit to EVACCO out there from the substation, right? Is that gonna go on the existing poles that go out there now?
No, Jared, the annual, they suggested underground.
And what would be the reason, I'm just curious?
I can't answer that for them, but um, that's, that's what he suggested is take an underground out to it.
Cause is there a circuit now above ground?
Yes, on East Rule, there are a tap, what they are is a tap off of East Rule.
Coming up from past Lake Blackwater Bridge that way?
Yes.
So like out past where Beth Moore lives now, where Todd Kraus, we don't go on that out to them at all?
That's going past there, East Rule is. East Rule comes from the substation overhead, all the way out to uh, Union or seventy-one and feeds all those rural customers. So, at TCT Trucking, you branch underground up County Road. It branches east and west, which is past your place, to the museum is where there's an open. That also goes all the way around North State, all the way around to Reggie Robex where there's another open, that's all on East Rule. Besides East Rule, besides EVACCO, EVACCO's a big load on that whole, whole line.
So the way, the way I look at this and we start to think about budget and incorporating projects. That is to have the uh, the conversation with our engineers about priority three, four and five. And what a, what a project might look like and really what the uh, what the city council feels comfortable with about the size of what a project would be. Um, cause of course this gets up into the millions of dollars quickly, but uh.
Get to four point seven, I know.
Yep. So just, just know that we'll be, we'll be having those discussions with, with our engineer and we, and we likely will come up with some proposals then about. About how we might look at a project and, and have the engineer down here to talk with the council about the scope of what a project would look like.
He talked about doing it in stages and to, you know, cost effective wise.
Cause then that also just ties hand in hand with our rate study then too, about making sure we would incorporate into the rate study this first phase of what construction would be. And the last thing there Jeff, number six?
I just brought up Scott, I, it's just kind of a personal feeling, I guess, from being in the business or whatever. I just never understood why the old sewer plant never had a backup generator. And when we built the lagoon, we put a backup generator, on-demand generator there, our water treatment plant doesn't have one of them.
Do we, do, do we know how much, the only reason I estimate it costs a hundred thousand when we're doing a backup generator for City Hall and stuff that was like thirty-five?
Yeah, that's, it's an estimate then for both for standby there and then for looking for a mobile generator.
We talked about a mobile Dale.
So that's two of them?
Yeah.
We talked about a mobile for the fact that we could take a mobile around to lift stations. So if you're down for days, at least you can pump a station down and move to the next one. This is something Bill and I had talked about years ago that just never, it never came about. It was something we always thought was silly, we never had some kind of backup.
You want to talk through that pending issue there then too Jeff?
On the overhead line?
Yes.
Um, this is one that we talked about last year, but. That's the line from the corner at South Provost going on the gravel road south to three fifty. And adding another phase in there to, to me, eliminate a potential. Hazard safety issue of putting that third phase in. The upside to me is on that safety. The second thing is we could get rid of the overhead under all those trees along the Hanky property. Which potentially they do that development there, we're gonna put underground to all that, that area anyway. By have that overhead in there and, and we've already buried some three-phase for the lift station already. And that's hanging in limbo right now due to the fact that we don't have that full three-phase in there.
So this overhead line miles south of Provost and Quincy, that's just going south of that corner that Hanky's overboard to the south of the aisle?
Yep, and the line, the overhead, the overhead would stay on the west side of the road. But it would, it would dead end and then we'd come underground off of that dead end and then get rid of that overhead that runs to the east to the lift station.
Is that all the further it goes right now, it's just the lift station?
Yep.
Where is uh, thirty acres fed from?
It is fed off of, this is all West Rule also, but it's fed from Jacob McCorkles.
Coming down that.
There's a riser, there's a riser string across the road from Friars that does, and that's potentially what I would do over there is put a riser. Feed the underground for Hanky's division.
So we're not, are we going a complete mile south then from that corner all the way?
Alls we're doing is pulling in one phase.
To the south?
Yep, basically it's one conductor being pulled in, some of the work's already been done.
So we're gonna bring it from the south to the north?
Correct.
Okay.
And then dead ended.
Right there, not, and then not feed like the houses that go up towards the rest of them?
Those are, are, yes, that, that will feed them, cause they're already fed off of that. It's just.
Adds a backup.
What it, I have a backup at Jan Roweters, I cannot throw that all the way in because right now it's a V-phase, so they call it V-phase, which is two phases. At Jan Roweters, we have three phases coming from East City. From the inlet where we put that transformer in for that pump station and that. And then it's tied in at the sectional cabinet at Jan Roweters. I have tags on white phase telling anyone not to plug that in. Cause if they plug that white phase into white phase on the other side of this cabinet, that is actually a white and blue phase. It's, it's a, it's a hairy deal, but if you don't know what's going on there, somebody can get hurt really damn easy.
And when we put in this overhead line there south of Provost that we need to establish?
Right, and we're coming, I was under, you know, I was always thinking we're going headed to the south, we're coming from the south to the north.
Coming from the south to the north.
That's like the same thing.
And just that, so that's listed as a pending issue because that's in our budget right now?
Right, yeah.
And we, we intend to do that and we would, would get a project together and, and bid that out, we want to talk about adding any, any other.
So we won't do that ourselves?
No, we would, we would look for a contractor on that.
No, keep in mind, with the three people we have, we're maintenance, we're, we're not construction. Can we go put a pole up in the knee? Yes, but to build a mile line or, or build big sections, it'll take us forever. You get pulled away to go locate, you get pulled away if somebody hits an underground, you get pulled away, you get pulled away too much.
Did you, you have anything else that you would add to that project then Jeff, I know you talked about a couple taps?
I want to look a little more in depth in it, um, hopefully I'll have a little more on that by after the first of the year. Bill had, I've talked to him several times, he says he's had some stuff platted out already that he tried to push through on the FEMA deal back in twelve or fourteen, whenever we did that. Did that, and I need to look through that, but I've got a pretty good idea, but I would like to like. We've got some taps out there that need replaced and maybe incorporate them into sweeten the pot, if somebody come in to do this, pull this phase in and.
That annual maintenance that we usually do with the underground company that come in last year, they don't do the above ground stuff?
No.
Okay.
We had used legacy power in the past and keep in mind, we haven't done any overhead projects since like fourteen. It's always been underground and, and the, all the new development, all the new housing, all, it's, it's pretty much focused on, on the underground in the past. I feel like we're leaving out some of this overhead stuff and our overhead customers, I feel like, need to have some of their stuff replaced too. Couple weeks ago, we were out at Denny Frank's, I was out looking at line and his, his end pole, his dead end at his transformer, I don't know how the hell the top stayed in it. We changed it out, cause I was afraid we'd get ice or heavy snow or frost on it and then.
Isn't that, isn't that part of your responsibility to bring that attention to Scott or whatever to do that maintenance for that, out, out of overhead stuff?
I ha, I have to go around and inspect and that's, I guess that is my responsibility.
Cause, I'm just asking this, cause you just made the comment that our rule guys are getting overlooked, but you don't have nothing on here for a rule except for that Provost thing, so shouldn't that be part of it on here?
Right.
Not only who puts this together.
Yeah, no, it should be, it should be added to this, I guess it comes down to a dollar a cent of what you want to spend. I don't, you know, Bill's been gone what, two years, three years ago, he tried to get this phase pulled in and it was like twenty-five thousand, pulled one wire in. And he didn't, he chose not to do it because he thought it needed to be done with another project to make it more cost effective.
All right, anything else for Jeff? Fancy.
Okay, and I don't know, um, did you talk to Eric about all of the, um.
All the equipment and everything and where, what were you referring to?
Yeah.
Cause yes, yeah, Eric did all of that work, uh, before Eric left, all of the inventory on all the equipment and any comments on the equipment, tell them Eric. Uh, before Eric left, all of the inventory on all the equipment and any comments on the equipment, tell them to Eric.
Yeah. And all of the, the campground and boot stuff, that's all, that's all fine. Um, the concession stand stuff, the freezers and everything. Um, in the shelter house, the, the tables, and I think that I had that on the needs assessment for the tables. The south side of those old, um, heavy metal with the wood tops and they're.
Ninety gold stables?
And they've been welded and they've, and there's one that looks pretty bad.
Yeah.
Um, so it would be good to, to get those fiberglass tables there, but we have, the white ones on the north side are starting to get discolored because, and we have breached them. And we, um, use the, Mr. Clean, you know, the magic erase and they're starting to feel a little, a little filthy. So I would suggest, you know, black ones. For different tables. And then the north side has a TV set. I don't know why the south side. We never get one. But I think it would be a good idea to have some of that right there.
What, what do we do? We rent the shelter house for how much aside?
It's not fifty dollars. Weekend rent is fifty dollars for a side, a hundred dollars for the whole building.
Per day?
Yes, you get it for the day.
And this, where, does that money go into?
It's in the general fund. It's not set aside for any special, specific thing.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Hmm?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh. So for parks, that's. That was all I had. And for Camp Crescent, uh, priority one, of course, is that green. Um, two, I think it would be nice to have an unfreeze hydrant installed. Um, we do have campers that come in in April. It's a lot of times construction workers, but this year there were, there were several that had made online reservations and then, um, the water wasn't on yet. So then, um, I had called and let them know that to see if they'd still want to come in and they didn't want to. Um, and then in October too, we have a lot of people that are starting to camp later and see them. Um, three, I think it's a good idea to upgrade all of the remaining sites to fifty amp. Um, and we have a lot of huge campers that are going into thirty amp sites. And with it being online now, we can't really monitor. Um, if they call and ask, we will tell them, you know, if they say they need fifty amp, you know, we'll tell them if we have sites available or not, but when they do it online, we really don't have, um, much say in that. And I, it would be nice to install, install sewer to all of the remaining.
Some, some of that is technical issues about whether there's enough water to, to get sewer in. That's why it says it's feasible because some of it's just not, not the word.
Um, can we, can I open up more sites for seasonal campers? Is that something the council is agreeable to? There's a, there's a lot of sites that I won't do it because we have, um, family groups that come and they've come every year for thirty five years and they have their certain sites, so they wouldn't be able to, I wouldn't take those away from them. But I have a list of fourteen people just from the summer alone that ask to be seasonal. And that doesn't help the list that Ruth and I already have. And I think there were at least a dozen on that list.
So how, how many folks did you have as seasonal then for this year?
How many did we have? Um, thirteen on light front. And then the one thirty nine to one sixty four were all seasonal. And then, um, four in the B section.
What, what area would you want to add more seasonal to?
Well, it'd probably be the A, the new concrete pads that, you know, closest to the houses. We do have sites set aside that we, for construction workers, which they, I think there were six sites set aside for construction workers and they were full all summer long. Um, and then with the, the dredgers, they told us that probably three will come back again this coming summer. And so we have sites set aside for them.
Must not be charging enough for seasonal campers.
Well, they pay, you, you pay for six nights, you get the seventh free, just like everybody else. They don't want to, they don't want to pull their campers home. They would just assume stay put. So if you think about it, during the week, almost all of them are not using, you know, the water. Yes, they plug in, so you know, their refrigerators are, are running and the air conditioners are running, but otherwise they're not using a lot of stuff that, you know.
I know the staff has always kind of walked the line on, on that a little bit about the number of seasonal people. Cause having seasonal campers is, is there and it's a terrific source of revenue. And, but then the other flip side of that is when you have all of those sites that are always taking it, limits the amount of spaces that are available for everybody else. So I know they've kind of walked the line on that. I know Nancy's looking for some guidance about what the councils think, thoughts on that or about how, how much that ought to be used.
What kind of numbers are we generating, as you said?
If she, if she was talking, and I don't know that we've ever hit fifty, but it, it's pretty close to fifty seasonal people, okay? And then we'll go through the, the financials here on the, on the campground. You know, our, our, uh, fees from, from reservations are now over three hundred thousand dollars a year. Big deal.
I have a question on that vehicle and equipment inventory under the parks.
Sure.
Like twenty, that trailer we just bought, it looks like.
This is as average.
It's still in new condition.
Is it?
Yeah. Just an misprint.
Could be there on some other line and had something else on it.
Okay.
Make that change.
Well, I was wondering.
I know, I was waiting.
I didn't know if we ended up not getting the right trailers while.
No, no, it, it's still.
Like no.
Yeah.
I think that's something to bring up Nancy and to have a different council meeting and see once. But I, it's a fine line for us to toe, but maybe we're not charging enough for the seasonal rental, seasonal campers that we're getting. Keep getting more and more requests like that. And I know some people talked about going down, I don't know, like to the northeast corner, like where that new slide was just put in.
Hmm.
Down to that, they'd like to stay there seasonal, but they were told they couldn't. So.
Well, I missed.
Is what I had two campers telling me.
Oh.
But I don't know. I says, I have no idea what is or isn't seasonal. I said, there's a spot in the lake right there. Yeah, but there's no sewer there. I said, I don't think there's sewer down there either.
Hmm, yeah. Um, priority three, replace the lights and exhaust systems in the bath, the house, the older bathhouses wanted to. The outside lights, there's a couple on number one that don't work at all and, and Jeff did look at it and, yeah, it was recommended that they all get replaced. But we have issues, big issues with bugs in those two bathhouses and, and it's because the one, the lights are on the breaker, so they're on all night long. And the other one, you know, well, people probably leave them on instead of turning them off. So it'd be nice to have them on the motion so that if no one's in there, they go off.
And never the, how did it take lights Jeff?
They're just a regular light.
They're not an LED light.
You guys put one, um, LED light in one of the showers and that made a huge, people commented on how at least you could see now. That's been several years ago. That was in the other two bathhouses.
I don't remember doing that. Did we have somebody else do it?
Well, unless the maintenance, unless Eric.
Maybe Eric, or Mike Mitchell, when he was here, maybe even them guys did. I don't, I don't remember.
That could be, that could be. And then it was, we are pretty crowded in the, the office concession stand with, um, we even have one refrigerator out in the garage. It would really be nice to have an addition on there so we could, and our countertops are full.
So what, what do you, in your mind, what's an addition look like there then?
I don't know. It would be, I think the, the back garage sticks out. It would be nice just to make it even with that. Cause there were two garages put on. One, the, the door faces your house and the other faces north. And then we take the, all the rags from the, um, shelter house, the drift racks, we take them home to marsh them and, and, um, the bedding from the cabins. Either that or we use the, the, um, bongar mat. And it would, there used to be a washer and dryer in one of the bathhouses in the storage room years ago.
Is that where you put it back to now?
Well, it would be fine with me. Years ago, the, the campers could use it and I wouldn't want it for the campers to use.
So would, if, I'm just hypothetically, we did do an addition, would you have room for a washer and dryer?
Depends on how it was, the addition was, was done.
Without an addition, would you have room for a washer and dryer?
In the, in the office?
Yeah.
No.
So it'd have to go into the bathhouse.
You're, you're looking at a full size washer and dryer or?
It wouldn't have to be.
Stacked.
It could be, yeah, yeah.
There used to be a washer and dryer. It was on the east side of bathhouse number?
One.
One? And there was just access from the outside and, and we ran it as a coinout, um, type of setup for the, for the campers. And way back in the day, Smitty just ran that as a little business, you know? Um, but anyway, we have not done that, that for years.
Would it, uh, I don't think the staff should have to take it home to their house to do it. But would it be feasible if we had a stackable washer and dryer up here somewhere that they could use? As an option?
I think that's a, I mean, certainly has space. It was just a matter of figuring out a space where it could, where it have, and have.
You gotta think about your access to getting power to it.
Yeah. I'm just thinking.
This building is not easy to do that in.
But we got the right guys to do it.
Not this guy.
I've done something here.
Just a, a comment there again, a poor wrote down pending issues there about mini golf project for the spring. We're absolutely planning on doing the big mini, mini golf, uh, update here in the spring. We had those applications in for SAC County endowment and funding. We still have not heard anything about the status of those grant applications. I put in here on page forty and forty one, the, uh, the financial report then for, for the campground. Take a look at revenues and expenses. Before we look at that, look at, at page forty one, uh, that, that just gives you the total stays for the year, broken down by the type of, of sites that we have. And without a doubt, you know, full, full hookup sites are, are very popular and, and they, they generate the most money for space. Uh, lake, lakefront, uh, also of course that's, that's full basically most of the time with, uh, seasonal folks. Then you look at the total number of stays, we, uh, did hit fourteen thousand nights there and we always figured three people per stay. So we're at forty two thousand. Um, total number of people. And it was down just a hair then from last year. So the record, uh, set last year about number of stays. And so it was down one point nine percent. Revenues were up compared to last year. We had the rate increase this year. So, um, and then as you take a look at, at page forty, it's just really FYI about, uh, comparing, uh, revenues and expenses then. This shows over the past four years, we have now incorporated, um, all of our utility usage and everything is, is now accounted for in the, uh, in the parks and then also, excuse me, in the parks and the campgrounds. Then the, you see the bottom, you get down to operations about whether we were plus or minus, and then it accounts for, for capital projects then afterwards. Capital projects, not, um, we didn't have big capital projects this year down in, in the campground necessarily. Some of the expenses are, uh, are engineering fees associated with survey down there.
Is our electric, is our electric expense accurate for twenty twenty two?
Yes. Now, we're gonna talk through that. Um, yep. Cause yeah, we, it was substantially higher than it, than it had been in the previous years. You want to talk about the metering down there Jeff and what, what we had, had discovered then?
Somehow, when we went to radio read meters, which we're talking several years ago, we weren't billing for multiplier of twenty for some reason on three meters.
So the, my question is answered really easily. Twenty, eighteen, twenty and twenty one, them are inaccurate compared to, okay, that's.
Off of them three meters?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. Cause it, it just, it, it almost double jumped. So there had to be something, that's what.
It's, yeah, you're talking three, 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 uh, four hundred amp services that weren't being billed at times twenty.
I just jumped out of me like.
And I, I guess my only explanation for it is, is when we switched those meters over, I know the old meters probably had a twenty wrote on them and I don't know if the electric department was being billed that times twenty back in the past. And the parks was never charged for electric then. So I don't know if it just, the electric department paid whatever the usage was and it never got recorded as times twenty. But we caught it. When we upgraded these transformers and we did the rates, or the electric study down there is how we caught it.
Just one thing. So, and Jeff mentioned that about whether the electric department is paying for this. Okay, so that electric there for eighteen thousand dollars in the campground this year, the electric fund still funds that. We don't have the general fund pay for that. You know, so we, and we can have that discussion about it if you'd rather look at something like that, but currently the electric fund still pays for the electric down there. This just accounts for the amount, how much is down there.
What, what costs are going into this miscellaneous under the parks? Cause there's like ten thousand three sixty four and twenty two and the year before was two thousand sixty seven.
Yeah, I'd have to check.
I mean, that's quite a difference.
And even the wages. I mean, the, the wages for the parks isn't part of that mowing and that in the campground?
And even the wages, I mean, the, the wages for the parks isn't part of that mowing and that in the campground and maintenance?
Yeah.
So that, that parks wages should, part of that should be up in the campground wages also, I mean.
Just as you add them all together, Mike, you get down to the, to the plus or minus on operations, that includes campground and parks.
Okay.
So it's all included.
But you keep saying that the campground makes this much money and, you know, if you add all the expenses to the campground, it, it's not gonna make.
This is accounting for the campground and the parks. I mean, everything's listed there on that.
Right.
Okay, any thing else on parks? How about the good chief?
Here we go.
Okay.
Welcome to the party.
Yeah. Uh, if you look at my vehicle and equipment inventory, uh, most of it's like new, fair or some good. Um, the biggest thing is like, if you go down to the, the cameras, the in-car cameras and, uh, the body cameras that we had before, um, one of our in-car cameras doesn't work at all. The other ones kind of hit or miss. Our body cameras that we had before, they, none of them worked. So I ended up going to the county and they gave me a bunch of their old cameras that I could use. Um, and, and they're fair, but, uh, obviously that's gonna be a priority. Yeah, go to my list, uh, obviously top is, uh, vehicle replace the Drango. I don't necessarily wanna replace the Drango. I'd just like to keep that in our department and fully equipped, so we have that available. Priority two would be another troll rifle for the, for the young kid. Um, he, he needs his own rifle. Uh, we get into priority three, three and four.
Hey, I got a question.
Yeah.
Didn't we, didn't we change our policy back four, five, six months ago, whenever, to equip our officers with rifles?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that we need another one. We only got three rifles for the guys that were here. I didn't get a board one for, because we didn't have them hired yet, so I wanted to make sure we were gonna be able to do that.
So after his, like, probationary or time, whatever, then we just buy one for him?
Well, yeah, well, he'll need one before he goes to the academy.
Okay. I guess I thought that was part of our whole.
Yeah, I'm just kind of bringing to everybody's attention that this is probably gonna be, need to be coming up again. So if you see a, you know, rifle, I know he's surprised or, um. So the in-car cameras and, and the body cameras, I've actually got estimates and, uh, that there, we have package deals for both from different companies. Um, what we're using now, basically, everything goes on a thumb drive. We take that thumb drive, bring it in here, we put it on the, on a computer and it just stays on the computer. Most of these systems now have cloud-based systems, so you're paying for a lot more, more of the software. It gets, it looks pretty expensive. Um, I think it's gonna run probably around eight to anywhere from like seven to eight thousand a year. For these systems for five years. Um, if anybody wants to see the quotes, I have those too.
So when you say seven, eight thousand a year for five, that, that includes the cameras, the software and everything?
Yeah, it, yeah, both the body cameras, the, the in-car cameras, the software. Um, so one company includes like installation, they have like installation.
So does that, for lack of better words, is that something like a Dish Network contract where you have a body camera built in there, they send you a new one up?
Yep, a lot of them have that, like those guarantees and stuff like that. And I think, uh, a couple of them, even after, I think they said two and a half or even five years, we send them in and they send us new ones. So it just depends on which company we decide to go with. Um, Axon cameras are obviously a lot more, so I think they're, they're gonna be a lot higher than what, what the other two companies that I researched order, but um, definitely something we need to look at.
Just the, the one thing that Chief was talking about there, that, that I had just considered to be a priority for a long time is how we store our data. And we just store it, they're out on, on the desktops, you know, we don't have, we do nothing fancy about storing. And it, of course, it eats up storage capacity that way. When they look at something like this, then it is all cloud, cloud-based. And then they're just calling down the, the footage that they need to see at the time and.
And actually, it'll, it'll track it a lot better. So there's, if there's videos on there that we don't need, it, it, we can set it up to where it, it gets rid of it after so long. There's videos that we want, you know, it, it, it all, it all makes sense, you know, as far as evidence wise and what we need to do as far as policy is concerned and, and that kind of thing. Right now, we, we got, I don't know, two, uh, towers sitting in this storage room and, and a external hard drive that, that are just sitting there full of old, old stu, old stuff, so. Um, computers, uh, you know, we got these tablets in there. At, at some point, prior to me coming here, they must've had it glitching something because they shut off the, uh, touchscreen on them. And, and there's times where they, they just, I don't know, something's wrong with them or something. It'd be nice to get laptops so we can actually use those like we would a regular desktop rather than having.
Multiple desktops, but. That's priority number five?
Yeah, and that price on it, it, it's gonna be a lot higher than that.
How many, how many is that?
Two, we need two. So and they're, they run, I think I got it for, for two of them and to have them installed, have the vehicle set up is around fifteen thousand. Looking back at when they purchased them last, it looks like it's probably around twelve thousand for Panasonic. So these are just different types of computers. Um, and the radar units are, are kind of the same thing. We got kind of one that kind of malfunctions a little bit, um. My, my idea is, is once we get the new vehicles, just try to upgrade what we can in there and a radar unit in there would be ideal to do. But obviously I'd like to hire another officer, um. Kind of, kind of looking back, you know, we, we, you know, summertime, obviously we're a lot busier than normal, uh. But then we started looking at things, uh, the school, we, you know, we gained the middle school, so we're, we're gaining more people there. Uh, Ybato grew, we, you know, we're seeing more people there, um, as the city itself starts to grow. You know, considering another officer would be ideal. Um, and on top of that, uh, code enforcement. It'd be nice to have a dedicated guy for code enforcement to be able to handle a lot of these issues that we have that come up.
Explain to me code enforcement that you're about to load.
Well, I wouldn't, like, when we, we deal with like all the, the garbage around houses, blowing leaves into the yard, uh, I mean, whatever we can enforce on, on the code enforcement. Uh, spike strips. I think spike strips, you know, we, we should add them to cars. It's really one of the most effective ways to really de-escalate and end a pursuit. Um, my thinking is we wanna end it before they come into town and get around a bunch of people. Uh, a lot of this, you know, is, uh, you know, increase our training budget. Uh, we got a pretty young department, so obviously sending these guys to, to different types of training would, would help out considerably. Uh, we do need a couple lockout kits.
It, it's, what's a lockout kit?
Uh, people lock their keys in their vehicles.
Uh, just to make sure.
We, we have kind of a half of one right now. We're missing a bunch of parts to it, so it'd be nice to have at least two, one for each vehicle if we're good.
So then, uh, is that something that you guys would have to get traded out to?
That, well, we all do it now anyways.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, yeah. Well, like, like I said earlier, I'd like to increase the, the vehicle fleet, uh, like I said, be nice. Um, I think, I think if we could, at some point, make it to where each officer has their own vehicle, um, I think that'll really help with maintaining the vehicles. I think we'd, we'd be able to get more out of them. Uh, plus, it'd be an incentive for somebody to move to town. If you got a tech on car, uh, you live in town, you can take a little car. I mean, I think that's a huge incentive. Uh, we need new desks, legs falling off, but I gotta duct tape together. And the real, the rest of this is just kind of just little stuff that, if you guys got questions on, I can answer, but it's nothing that just stuff that I'd like to see us get.
Isn't, isn't some of this stuff?
Yeah.
Normal maintenance.
Yeah, and we get, yeah.
It would come out of your normal budget?
Yeah, we had to have this talk. I, I didn't rewrite Chris's, uh, uh, document because he, he did such a damn fine job of opening it to me. So, but, uh, thirteen, fourteen, uh, thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen.
They would all just be operations and, and we plan on getting them here shortly.
Yep.
We need the desk.
And.
Yep.
Yeah, follow us, man?
Yeah, yeah, them last two are kind of wish list type things, but.
I don't think that's a wish list. I hate to tell you that. But with everything going on in our world today, I'd hate for somebody not to have that and go hide in a corner because they don't have the equipment they need to do it.
You're talking about the shield or the helmets?
Either one.
Yeah. I mean, they, they'd be important, but it's not gonna stop, you know what I mean? I mean, I, I would like.
It's not gonna stop the active shooter, but it's gonna sure as hell make you feel better here behind a shield instead of going hide behind a desk.
I do, yeah.
Am I, that's only me saying that, right?
I'm, 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 I'm with you.
Safety is safety. Looked pretty stupid. We didn't spend thirty-seven hundred dollars to save somebody's arm in a desk.
Exactly.
Good, what else you got for the chief? Just on, on page forty-six, there's a few things on, on city hall and administration. And, uh, we, we have gotten new computers this year, so those are all listed in the inventory. And, uh, and everything's functioning pretty well there. Let's take a look at page forty-seven. Just, uh, really not too much on the departmental needs assessment here. Uh, we would look at getting some new city council chairs. And it would likely would be, maybe they would likely not be this big and they probably would have, uh, have plastic handles on them. So we'll get the same, uh, plastic arms, we don't.
Take them out of the larger budget.
I'm not over it yet, am I?
No.
I think you're doing okay so far.
The dean was talking about, this is my chair, you guys can't handle it.
Um, can, computer and technology upgrade, we just keep that five thousand dollars in the budget, uh, every year. And, uh, some years we have spent it, some years we haven't. We have had this discussion on priority three about tech, technology and maintenance and security. And we've had the, that, uh, every, every year, I think we've had, had this discussion and I've never been really ready to move on this. Um, but part of it, of this maintenance and security and video backup, if we can address some of that through police department. I think that's a great way to go about, uh, replacing community entrance signs that, uh, had been identified as a priority last year, not, uh, put into the budget this current year. That west, the big west community side has a large crack in it. But the housing and development committee really wants to work on a, on a, a citywide signage and beautification plan.
Is there plans for that?
Yep, we can help out with, with some of it, with the vans, yeah. Other issues, um, and this one just, boy, it just needs, it needs to be done and we just haven't had any movement on it for a long time. It's to do something with the, the shingles on the log cattle. That they've, uh, we just need to get those addressed and, and make sure that they're installed properly. They're just the shakes.
The natural cedar shakes, aren't they?
Yeah, last time I, I understand they weren't really put on there properly. They didn't breathe and they didn't last very long, so. Yeah, we do need to find somebody who can do that properly.
Any word on our famigrant?
That I've filed those documents from, uh, from Acton and, uh, no, no big since. I believe that's it. So, you know, the, the way the process will work here, we'll have our next city council meeting. Um, I will have some, some of these priorities slotted into a, a capital improvements plan and we'll start the, uh, start the discussion from there. Be ready at the next council meeting. And then. So I mean.
January third.
January third, Tuesday, the third we'll meet and then meet the following Monday, then we'll, again, for a planning session on the next.
Mosher, do the adjourn?
I'll make that bullshit.
Second?
Second.